The issue of how might sewers, and this is really broader than just the district at hand, how might sewers impact growth in the town? Or, and then the second issue is, how will sewers or lack of sewers affect economic development? On the first point, the master plan that Mr. Hunter alluded to tonight was really done with a lot of public input. It considered the overall quality of life in town. It resulted in a massive rezoning in town that concentrated development in the village areas. And really downzoned, for lack of a better word, the outlying areas. We're finding that these village areas are limited in how they can grow. So in other words, the economic development really will not be able to be achieved without sewers. In other words, the zoning that we voted for and that we're trying to encourage really has this limitation to it without sewers. On the second issue of build-out, the master plan also has a theoretical build-out to it. Most towns never achieve that because of a number of practical limitations, such as topography, wetlands, floodplain, et cetera. One of those limitations is really sewage disposal. When we all voted for zoning at a town meeting and the subsequent mini-plans, the village plans we've done over the last couple of years, we never really considered the sewage disposal limitations. And I think we all believed that we could really achieve the plans that we were trying to achieve in these zoning articles. As Mr. Hunter also mentioned, the packaged treatment plants have really removed that sewage disposal limitation. So the effect of putting sewers in place would really be the same thing. We think that, on the first issue of growth, that there really, growth will occur with or without the sewers. The rate is a little bit unpredictable, and I don't really think anybody in this room can really, really judge that. On the issue of economic development, we feel the town really needs it, and if you sit in one of these town meetings and think of all the things we're voting for, to the extent we have business development, we can encourage that and have it be sustainable, that's really an opportunity for us to fund it through businesses, and we think that's very important for all of us as citizens. So the planning board asks that you support this article and the related articles in this town meeting. Thank you.
And now comments from the Board of Health, Bill McGinnis.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill McGinnis from the Board of Health. We had a prepared statement, but like most statements that are arrived at by committee, it's a little difficult to understand, so I'll paraphrase it for you. Sewers are a good thing. They're a very good thing. And in short, in short, they, as Doree mentioned, the water that leaves the sewage treatment plant is essentially clean enough to drink. I'm not proposing that we do that, but it's essentially that quality water that's much better than the water that's going to be put in the ground from your septic system. Sewers are also a permanent solution. Occasionally, when people's septic systems fail, they do so rather dramatically, to the consternation of their neighbors. With a sewer, that will never happen again. And lastly, just let me mention a few small benefits, but they are real benefits for the people whose houses will be sewed. If you have a septic system that is in failure, not in a dramatic sewage running down the street failure, but in a technical type of failure, you can still hold off repairing your septic system for several years under Title V. The Title V allows that if you have the ability to connect to a sewer system within a several-year period. Also, if you're contemplating selling your house and you go through the dreaded Title V inspection of your septic system, and it turns out it fails, again for technical reasons, and you're in the sewer district, you can proceed. You don't need the Title V inspection. You can proceed and sell your house. And then there are the little things. Some of you might want to consider putting an in-ground swimming pool in, and I don't know if any of you have ever tried to do that in Acton. If you have a small piece of land and the septic system takes up most of it in the backyard, there isn't going to be an in-ground swimming pool, at least not one you'd want to swim in. So, once you're on sewers, you know, your septic system can be abandoned and, if you want, you know, removed, and you can enjoy some additional amenities. So, from the Board of Health perspective, I'll just repeat, it's a very good thing. Thank you.
And finally, from the Conservation Commission, Maureen Bodnar. I'm sorry, who will it be? Okay, well?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, William Hill from the Conservation Commission. As many of you know, the commission prepared a comprehensive open space and recreation plan last year, spending many hours dealing with the issues of open space in the town and as well as environmental issues. It was the, a point that was raised in that plan was that the sewers was a top environmental concern in the town. There was a need for sewers. From an environmental point of view, the Fort Pond Brook and Mill Pond area are suffering obvious contamination brought about by failed and failing septic systems. There's a need for sewers. The, from a conservation point of view, if ever there was a time to deal with this critical environmental concern, the time is now. There's a consensus of the Conservation Commission that this article is worthy of your support. Thank you.
And now the discussion is open to the town meeting members. Gentlemen at the front.
David Black, 237 Central Street. I'd like to observe an interesting fact that comes from putting together the Board of Selectmen's presentation and the school committee's presentation. The article as written is asking you to vote some money, it's asking you to increase the amount of money the town is going to be paying, but because if we pass this article, we don't have to spend $2 million on the school's treatment plant. And that $2 million would be money we can't borrow at 0%. In essence, when you put this article together with the alternatives that we're stuck doing if it fails, you're being asked to vote yourself a tax cut to install sewers if you live outside the district.
The gentleman at the back?
Malcolm Cronkell, Parker Street. I would just like to point out a potential conflict in, or excessive overlap in some of the rosy pictures we've heard tonight, and hope that this is being considered in the planning. We've heard that there's roughly 50% additional capacity as the plant is currently proposed to be sized over the water that's currently being used in the district. That's nice, that sounds like people can grow and so forth, but we've also heard projections about all this new commercial development we can have when we have sewers and Exchange Hall and Lundermats and other heavy users. My fear is that we could use up that 50% awfully fast, and I hope that's being thought about.
Gentlemen at the back. Mr. Hunter, do you have a comment on that? He's raising his finger, saying, yes, they did think about it.
Thank you.
It's not right, it's his thumb he raised, excuse me. You're not going to trick me again.
My name is Mark Shire. I live at 18 Prescott Road. I'm the president of the Acton Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm speaking on behalf of the chamber tonight. The Acton Area Chamber of Commerce enthusiastically endorses the passage of this warrant article. We stand with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the other committees and commissions from which you've heard in urging our townspeople to vote for this article. And we at the chamber thank the Sewer Action Committee for spending time with us to review this plan in detail, and we commend the efforts of all the people who have worked so tirelessly to bring this article before us tonight. We urge you to vote yes on Article 18. Thank you.
Mr. Katie?
Yes, Bill Katie. I've got a couple of points I'd like to make. First of all, I'm 100% behind this article, and I think I'm 100% behind a comment Nancy made. I think every part of town that needs a sewer should be sewed. But I think that's a very specific statement, and I don't think that also means that the entire town needs to be sewed, right? I was here in 1966, and this building wasn't here, and there was a huge uncontrolled growth. And contrary to Doree's statements, I think there was a disaster pending. If we had built sewers at that time, in '66, without the zoning that we have, without the 30 years of rezoning, creation of these districts, which we had, all of the village districts, with all of the incentives, with all of the legal work that we'd done, we would have had total uncontrolled growth in this town, and we would have ended up, and who knows what it would have been like, but it certainly wouldn't be the environment we have today. And we now have a legal basis to undertake a controlled, sustainable economic growth based on seoring those areas that need to be sewed. And that's a big difference than 1966, 1977. And in '86, I hate to be the person to say, told you so, but there were people who told you so. Don't believe the DOE. They were here, and they stood up and told you.
Mr. Katie, I love the history lesson, but maybe we could confine ourselves to whether you support or...
Well, I support, but there's two specific questions I have. One is, what are we going to do now that we have, if we vote this in, we need to have a sewers commission, and it shouldn't be the town selectmen, which were put in place as a necessity, as, that now creates a conflict of interest, clearly. So as soon as we vote this, which we are going to vote, then you are immediately in a conflict of interest position with the sewer district, as being selectmen and on the sewer district, I consider it a conflict of interest, maybe you don't. And I would like to know when you are going to have a commission properly established. That's the first question. And the second question I have is relative to controlling the growth. Is there a way, along the way, as we plan to sewer those areas that need the sewers, to prevent uncontrolled growth of areas that today were not perccable land, not developable parcel of property, from all of a sudden being able to come in and put in two or three houses and legally prevent that from happening by zoning? In other words, if you would have made this article and say, okay, I'm going to, I don't want anybody who's got three pieces of land along the sewer line, and the land doesn't perk today, to be able to build a house on it. Is that legal or not?
Do you have those questions?
No, but because both of them require a legal opinion, I wonder if we could ask Town Council those questions?
Sure.
Well, with respect to the first question, I fail to see any conflict of interest between the selectmen acting as selectmen and acting as sewer commissioners. The statutes specifically allow that, and it occurs in many towns. There is a question, obviously, of the burden of the duties, and that's to be seen in the future. I'm not sure I really understood the second question. If the zoning permits development on land, you can't prohibit that. That creates spot zoning of the most blatant sort, so that if the land is zoned for residential use, it can be used for residential development.
Gentlemen at the front?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize if I was perceived as being uncivil hitherto. I was asked to sit down like a bad boy in front of 600 people, and that, you know, did throw my composure off a tad. I think we agreed, the people in my role still haven't been able to figure out whether or not an override, as is claimed in the printed warrant article, and which, to my way of thinking, as Bill Mullen termed it in a meeting in December, this would potentially, the sewer project, work out to be selectman-mullen. This would potentially be the largest single capital expenditure ever undertaken in the town of Acton, and I find it hard to believe that an override vote wouldn't attend that event. I would like to offer a few thoughts, if I might, in as civil a manner as I can undertake. A number of my letters have been published in The Beacon. My name is Henry Emmett, and you may have read them or not. I am sort of considering myself as a bit of a beacon in the night at this point, having moved here two years ago from the town of Chelmsford, which has been undergoing a seoring project for the last 20 years. I have firsthand experience with this. They did bring it down the street in front of my house. I was a town meeting representative, elected three times in the town of Chelmsford. We only have 160 people to represent a town of 36,000 people there. So my opinions, you know, have been tried on town meeting floor and given some credibility. I simply want to express that I think sewers in general are certainly, you know, a terrific idea. The haste or the loose ends in this project, the numbers which I see, you know, I got in my insert in my tax bill, a request for volunteers to join this committee within the last year, I think, and I considered it deeply, but I knew that I was, I think, basically opposed, so I didn't think it would be proper to volunteer for that committee. But the point is, is that I don't think it's the most long-lived committee. Some of the questions that I had specifically, which just caught my, you know, the statement seems to be that we're worried about the contamination of the groundwater, and I understand that in 1966, Doree, you could walk in the woods and, you know, the swamp smelled and stuff, and I think that's terrible. But I would ask Mr. Haley if there has been any evidence of contamination in any of the wells at the current moment? Or the Health Department, or...
Someone may answer that, surely. I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Haley? Well, can someone else answer the question?
Certainly.
Insofar as we're aware, there is no contamination in the wells.
Okay.
By the way, just to offset the problem of Mr. Haley needing to answer a question, all in favor of hearing from Mr. Haley, if necessary, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Mr. Haley, you can speak whatever you wish now. It's going to cost you 25%, however.
The idea, the first thing that I really want to share, which, the expense essentially is $3.8 million for the sewage treatment plant itself. Now, for a plant which admittedly was described as modular and theoretically could be enlarged a piece at a time, which also theoretically may, as stated, may at one time envelop, accept the entire town's sewage, and as to whether or not that's allowed to be, 250,000 or 500,000 gallons a day right now is still up in the air, I just cannot believe that the price of that. I know that the smells and the noise that are generated by even state-of-the-art plants in New Bedford, in Nantucket, in Edgartown, they built, three years ago, a $13 million plant with a 400,000 gallon per day capacity, which is less than we're proposing, and they are having innumerable problems. The neighbors write continual letters to the paper, and that costs four times, three times as much as this plant, and they still can't get it right. And New Bedford has a huge plant that has lots of problems with smells. I would urge people who live in that area to be very suspect of a $3.8 million plant. And, you know, I'm not opposed conceptually to sewers. I heartily endorse all the reasons for it, but this particular plan, I know, I can tell you, I wrote my town manager to confirm the figures on the yearly spending. Now, Chelmsford admittedly has twice as many people, but they do not have, they don't even service any of their own sewage within the town. It all goes out to Lowell, to the Duck Island Treatment Plant. It's piped right out of town. They don't have any treatment expenses in town. Their yearly exempt debt, which they are not allowed to vote on every year at town meeting, it's an automatic rubber stamp, is $6 million a year, every year, and we're being asked, we're being told, $144,000. It's so ludicrously out of balance with reality. This is why I speak of myself as a beacon in the night, you know? We have priorities here. There is the library, the recreation area, the school, potential additional school which may need to be built, the police station. I think that the seoring is a great idea, but we've got to prioritize, and the trash, you look at the trash expense that's coming up. I was a member of the solid waste advisory plant in Chelmsford, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and admittedly, we were not part of Nezwick, but there are, the money that we are spending in Acton is admittedly a result of a mistake made years ago in all the best intentions, but I do not, I'm worried, and I do not, I just don't place that much faith in a lot of these figures, and I would love to see an alternative, more realistic proposal presented soon in the future. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the front?
My name is Duncan Wood, 9 Brisbane Road, Acton. In all due respect to this gentleman, this committee that has come forward tonight has not been a short-lived phenomenon. I, for one, was the point person in 1983, 1984, 1985. We were shot down twice and sort of won on the third try. I believe that you have to have faith in the people who put in that 4,600 hours, and all the hours that went in in 1980s, 1970s, and 1960s. I think the stars are in the right place. You might say it has something to do with the comet. I'm not sure. But my point is, yes, the gentleman's correct, we don't know exactly what these numbers are going to be. We don't know exactly what the flow rate's going to be. We don't know exactly how many days out of a year the treatment plant won't work perfectly. But you go forward, you work with the process, you continually refine it, and you believe in the future. And I think it's time for the town to take that step that we didn't have the courage to do in '83, '84, in 1966, 1947, and say, it's now, it's time to do it and live with what we vote. I strongly urge us to move forward.
Gentlemen at the back?
My name is Joe McGinty. I'm at 28 Conant Street in South Acton. I have a question regarding the user fee. Is the user fee independent of the number of users?
Not entirely. It's based on a projection in part of the hookup rate. But it is in part in the sense that you don't ramp the plant up to full capacity and thus full cost until you have appropriate number of users either.
So if you have a minimum number of users, then the user fee goes up to some extent, or no?
Yes, if we were underhooked up under what we were projected, the per-unit, per-gallon user fee would be higher. On the other hand, if people hook up faster than we projected, it'll probably be somewhat less.
Lady at the back?
Judy Cronkell, Parker Street. As in other major debate issues, I would request that you alternate pros and cons so that maybe when we run out of cons, we can vote.
We only have two people left. I'll recognize the gentleman at the back.
Mr. Moderator?
That was a good idea, by the way. It is a good idea to do that.
Dan Klein, Old Stone Brook. First, I'd like to commend the enormous, enormous amount of time and energy that's gone into this over the last, what was it, 50 years? Talk about sewage, but it's a tremendous amount of work. I've been privileged to have a sewer, and I think everybody who needs one should have one. And with that in mind, I call the previous question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of shutting off the debate, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Debate is cut off. This is a two-thirds vote required, so if it is not unanimous, it's got to be counted in one fashion or another. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay. No, 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 hold it. You're clapping because you think, you're clapping because you think it was unanimous. It was not. I'm sorry. It was not unanimous. And I think that's democracy, and there's a couple of people who voted against it. I will take the vote again, and if it is not unanimous, it will be counted, but I'll count it in a way so it won't take a great deal of time. Because there's no sense to use the tellers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. It is now unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
In Mr. Emmett's speech, I believe there's a question that was left unanswered. I don't believe I heard an answer to whether we're going to see an override vote as a result of having approved Article 18.
I don't really think that's a valid point of order, but that's all right. If someone, if you want to answer it, go right ahead.
We don't have a board position on that. That will be an item for our next selectmen's meeting, but I know that I would be urging for us not to have a debt exposure override for that $78,000 a year.
All right, we will move to Article 20. Article 20 is your motion, Mr. Hunter, I believe. Motion to Article 20. I'll declare a 30-second recess. Yes, go ahead.
If I may make productive use of the 30 seconds.
Well, we're in recess, and you're not going to do it because no one can hear you. You won't be able to be heard. I'll give you a shot when it's over, when they're out. We're in recess.
Okay, it's not actually business.
Call the meeting back to order and start up with Article 20. Now, sir, standing at this microphone, you want a suggestion, or...
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out Nancy and Doree were very generous when they mentioned the 4,600 hours of volunteer labor put in, but I just wanted to point out to the town meeting members, probably 2,600 of that was from Doree and Nancy.
Thank you very much.
We're about to start some motion here. Mr. Richter, what did you have to say?
I just wanted to put in a word of thanks to Mr. Nyquist and Mr. Gerhardt, who started the thing in '66.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Liberty, you were standing there for something, I know.
Yes, I'd like to impose upon the town meeting, in the interest of a babysitter and perhaps a change of pace, and put in motion to take Article, forgive me, is it 29, out of order with the indulgence of the town meeting.
Do I hear a second? A comment as to whether we should do this or not? Mr. Hunter, did you wish to make a comment?
I was just going to suggest that Article 20, which I think will go very quickly, relates to the sewers, and taking it up now would shorten the presentation to later time.
Okay, Mr. Gresser, you're talking to the...
Mr. Moderator, I would strongly oppose taking up that article. I... I believe it's a contentious article. I think we've all seen a lot of people have left the meeting quite late at night. I think to take up a contentious article late in the evening, out of order, in fact deprives many of their right to be here during the time. I think that it would be better if possible to take up less contentious articles at this
Moderators don't have an opinion on that, but I am persuaded to say maybe they should have stayed. But your point is well taken. Other comment on taking up the article? All in favor of taking up Article twenty-nine at this time, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion is lost, Article twenty. Mr. Hunter moves that the town appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for engineering and related services to identify sites to serve the wastewater disposal needs of the entire town, and that to raise such amount, the remaining balance of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and three dollars and twenty cents be transferred from the proceeds of Article forty-seven of the nineteen eighty-six annual town meeting, and the remaining balance of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirteen cents be transferred from the proceeds of Article forty-eight of the nineteen eighty-six annual town meeting, and that fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents be raised and appropriated, and that the town manager is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any federal and state grants available for these purposes. Do I hear a second? Mr. Hunter.
Very briefly, ladies and gentlemen, this is an article that would propose to use monies left over from the design articles in the eighties for sewers, plus another fourteen thousand dollars and change, to do a comprehensive study of the other sewer districts in town with a view toward disposal patterns in the sense of where we should put it. We have been able to go forward and achieve the vote that you just made here on the Middle Fort Pond Brook sewer district because we've done all the appropriate initial and intermediate studies. The next thing that we need to do is to look and see where we should be looking for disposal areas if it all doesn't go to Adam Street, which, as I said before, is not a certainty by any matter of means. We have had some very good work done by the Sewer Action Committee, and particularly the site identification group in this regard, but for those of you who know Acton well, you will know that trying to find a reasonable-sized piece of land on which you could infiltrate a good volume of processed water is a very difficult task. And some of the candidates, or the potential candidates, would actually be conservation land, which would require legislative action to go in and put the stuff under conservation land, and we wouldn't want to undertake or even propose if there were any alternatives. And we also have to look at some out-of-town possibilities. And this is ask for money for consultant to do that, to build on the work of Sewer Action Committee and essentially give us a better overall view of where we would be going as we pursue that hope to bring this benefit to other sewer districts beyond that that you just voted tonight, or well, actually, beyond the fatter Middle Fort Pond Brook District, because we've got all the studies done for that. If we just get capacity, we can do that. I'm talking about beyond those boundaries. Thank you.
Other comment from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends passing of this article. Two points. The first one is that the operative language is in the one, two, third, fourth line down for the disposal needs of the entire town. Entire town is the operative term. And on page thirty-four, it points out that the funds are made up from balances remaining in previously passed articles plus new money of fourteen thousand. We feel that's a perfectly reasonable amount to go forward with this study.
Other comment? Anybody standing? I see nobody. Therefore, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried unanimously. We'll move now to Article twenty-one. Again, Article twenty-one has an extremely long motion. I will read it. Mrs. Tavernier moves that two hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects. Repair, replacement, and or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation, all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow two hundred thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Law, Chapter one eleven, Section one twenty-seven B one slash two, and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town. That the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof. And that the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects. Do I hear a second? And Mrs. Tavernier.
Well, he just stole my whole presentation by reading the motions. Let me try to condense it down. The legislature in January of nineteen ninety-six through the Open Space Bond Bill created a program that would help particularly the twenty-five percent of the people in the state who are not on sewers, who were severely impacted by the Title V regulations. And the way that we are proposing tonight to access some two hundred thousand dollars of that funding is through a community septic management program and specifically to borrow two hundred thousand dollars from the state, interest-free, which we can then turn around and loan out to residents of the town who are repairing or replacing their systems. The Board of Health will be creating criteria for these residents to meet, and it will begin with the most environmentally sensitive areas that are having the greatest failure rates. It will not be income-based initially, but should we have an equal need in any particular areas, then perhaps income will be adjusted, will be factored in. The loans will be loaned at a five percent interest rate to the residents, and that five percent will cover only the administrative costs. This is not a profit-making program for the town. The state statute does not allow that. Two hundred thousand dollars, if you've heard some of the quotes, for septic system repairs is not going to go very far, but it at least is an effort for us to reach out to those of you who will not be seared in the near future, to at least give you a helping hand with what we know is a tremendous financial burden. I urge your support of this.
Comments from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It seems very reasonable to accept a grant from the state to provide low-interest loans for people stuck with a huge septic system bill.
Other comments? Other comments? Hello? I see no one standing. So we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried unanimously. I have a note that says you would not like to discuss, the school committee does not want to discuss Articles twenty-two to twenty-four now because of the lateness of the hour. Is that correct? So if that is your wish, we will not do twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four. I don't need a motion for that since I know what you want, and we will move directly to Article twenty-five. Plowing of private ways. Mr. Fredericks moves that the town raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for the plowing of private ways open to public use as designated by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a second? Mr. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The light's coming on.
Okay, thank you.
For those of you who are new at town meeting, this is an annual article. We passed it last year, and the reason the selectmen supported it was that we felt that we would give a break to the people on the private streets who, in fact, qualified since they pay their taxes, and we thought they should get a benefit for it. The plowing of private ways is authorized under state law. Under MGL, Chapter forty, the private ways must be open to public use. The rules are set by the Board of Selectmen. We establish the criteria. We hold the, we receive the petitions. These must be done by September. We hold a public hearing in October, and we vote for the plowing for the upcoming winter. And it's an annual process. We have to do this every year. Some information on the private ways. We have roughly fifteen miles of private ways. It's estimated that about a third of these would qualify. The average annual cost is fifteen hundred bucks. We currently plow about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five miles of public road. I'll skip down a few. The private ways that petition for plowing are to be considered first. When the budget is used up, the plowing stops, and they go back to plowing their own. For your information, last year, we plowed five, up through April first, we plowed, including the April first storm, we plowed five times at a cost of ninety-two hundred and fifty dollars. So we didn't quite use the ten thousand, but we could have. These are the criteria for the plowing. Number one, private way must be at least twelve feet wide. Number two, must be adequate turnaround determined by the Highway Department. Number three, the private way must be paved and free of ruts and potholes. Number four, the private way must be open to the public. Number five, must serve a minimum of three residences. Number six, the maximum grade is defined. Number seven, no sharp curves. Number eight, must be plowable with standard equipment. Now, these were the rules that we put up for last year. We've added two more rules, so I'm going to try to squeeze this all in on one overhead. If I can do this. There, there we go. The two we added is the construction of the way must be complete, meaning a development that's half-built doesn't qualify for the plowing. And number ten, there can be no conservation restriction. This mainly has to do with salt. If it's in a conservation area, it may be qualified or may be conditioned upon a no-salt spreading. And we plow and we sand at the same time, and the sand has salt. So these are the criteria. Based on this, the selectmen recommend this article.
From the Finance Committee, Mr. Olmstead.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article also.
Comments from the town meeting members? I see no one standing, so we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move to Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes.
In light of the lateness of the hour, Mr. Moderator, and the importance of the next motion, I would respectfully move that we adjourn at this time.
I'm going to let you make the motion, but that's not an acceptable point of order. But I'll let you make the motion to adjourn if you wish.
I move that we adjourn.
Now, I just got to be a little, have more information than that. You all know what it is. When and where?
I move that we adjourn and we reconvene tomorrow night at seven-thirty in this auditorium.
Do I hear a second? Comment? Nancy?
I would recommend adjourning. We really need to finish tomorrow night. I think the options for continuing late next week are really going to, we're going to lose more people than. I would suggest pushing forward. I think each of these articles are independent of each other, and I am encouraged that town meeting, as usual, will make the right decision.
Other comment? And the motion to adjourn? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We will not adjourn. Motion's lost. We'll move on to the Morrison Land article. Mr. Mullin moves that the town raise and appropriate one million, three hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for the acquisition or by purchase eminent domain or otherwise of a parcel of land known as the Morrison property for general municipal purposes. Said land consisting of thirty-two dot five-six acres, more or less, and being located on the northerly side of Concord Road and bordered on its westerly side by Woodlawn Cemetery and on its easterly side by Ice House Pond, as shown on Acton Town Map, Atlas Map F4, parcel thirty-four. And that to raise such amount, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow one million, three hundred thousand dollars under General Law, Chapter forty-four, sub-paragraph S three. And that the town raise and appropriate one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the payment of interest and underwriting costs on such borrowing in fiscal year nineteen eighty-eight, and that the town manager is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any federal and state grants available for these purposes, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Sub-Paragraph Twenty-One C, Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote. Do I hear a second? We moved and seconded. Mr. Mullin.
Request a two-minute recess.
Sure.
Thank you.
Then the meeting will be in recess for two minutes.
Prepared for three interceding articles, which were quickly removed, so I apologize for the delay here. This is a very important article. It involves what is known as the Morrison Farm. What are we going to cover here today? First, I'm going to introduce some people who are at this table up here. We're going to talk about what is the Morrison Farm, what are we trying to do, and how much will it cost? Why are we trying to do this? What are the hurdles and challenges? Are there side benefits? We're going to take a very brief look at the farm in a video form, and then we'll summarize. First of all, at this table up here, to my immediate left is Will Hill of the Conservation Commission, Maureen Bodnar of the Conservation Commission, Karen O'Neil of the Citizens Ad-Hoc Group, Tom Tidman, who is our Natural Resources Director, and Alan Warner, who is the chairman of the Recreation Committee, among many other things in town. These people have all formed an ad hoc committee in support of this article. What is the Morrison Farm? The farm is located, as it is indicated on here in purple, on Concord Road, near two A, abutting Ice House Pond. This map shows the, the land is immediately to the left of Ice House Pond. It's on Concord Road. There's a barn and a house. It's about sixteen acres of very level, flat land in front. There's a beautiful white pond, pine forest in the back. It runs along the Neshoba Brook as well. This piece of land has also been identified by multiple studies within our community as the prime piece of property that we... as the prime piece of property that we should acquire to the extent that it comes on the market. It has been identified by the Master Plan as the number-one piece of property to acquire, by the Open Space and Recreation Plan, by the Chapter 61A Committee Plan. Chapter 61A is a chapter that allows land to be kept in an agricultural use for a diminished tax on the land, but the exchange for that is that the town gets the right of first refusal when that property is sold. But as you can see, this is about 32 acres of land, abutting Ice House Pond. Why are we trying to do this? There are really four major points here, very simple and straightforward. In Acton, we have a dearth of recreation land. In any given weekend, there are 1,500 people, young and old, in spring and fall, who are using the acreage of land. We need this land for additional active recreation purposes. Second, when you come off of Route 2A and you turn onto Concord Road, do you take a sigh of relief? I know that I do. As I commute from Boston and come up 2A, and if I head to town, I really feel that I'm in Acton when I turn onto Concord Road. We would like to preserve Concord Road in its current condition as representing what we perceive Acton to be. Third, we spent some money a while ago to improve Ice House Pond. This will leverage Ice House Pond. We will be able to use these resources in an additional way. Finally, and not unimportantly, this will provide a buffer to the beautiful, magnificent Woodlawn Cemetery, which has been so carefully husbanded by the stewards of that, the cemetery commissioners. This will provide a buffer where otherwise it might go to other development. Just as a point, we have approximately 1,522 acres of conservation, recreation, and agricultural land, of which 20 is active recreation. This will help to correct that disparity. What are we trying to do here? This is not a straightforward deal. The estate of Mr. Morrison is negotiating with us, and at this point, that involves discussions with an attorney, who is, I would characterize as, testy. His position is to protect the interests of the Morrisons in all respects, and so it's been kind of a parry and thrust, perhaps, to call it that, in this negotiation. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to continue to negotiate with the attorney for the estate, and he has basically told us, in the words of the town manager and the assistant town manager, who relayed his words to us, he said, "You have no cash, you have no flash." What that translates into is that he wants us to see if there's a commitment from the town to proceed with this. That is what we are here tonight to do. Backing up the cash and the flash, in this case, is this discussion, which will involve a two-part process, a town meeting vote, and then a subsequent town ballot vote for a debt exclusion override. After that is done and hopefully approved, we will then go into negotiating final terms. There are some things that are working to our advantage here, and one of them is a life tenancy of the current resident there, the former Mrs., well, the current Mrs. Morrison, but the widow of Mr. Morrison. And I think that the town, and we have some more patience than a developer would, and thus we have some advantage there. If we do come to final terms, according to the price that we have determined, then we will go and form a use task force and go forward with determining the final uses. What is the cost of the farm? The price we're talking about is approximately $1.3 million. That price was determined by taking two current appraisals, averaging the appraisals, adding in some closing costs. How much does that cost to the taxpayers? On a 20-year bond at a current market rate of 6.12%, the annual payment would be in year 1, $144,000, declining to $69,000 on straight-line amortization. Tax rate, 9.23% cent increase, declining to 4.41%. Tax increase for a $300,000 house, $27 in the first year, 13 in the last. There's an additional cost that we examined, which is if the property were developed, there would be a cost because of the incremental cost of educating, presumably educating children if there were a development that is going in there. But rather than focusing on that, I think what we really need to say here is that have you had enough of the development and the build-out here, where houses are going in everywhere? I think that this is not the proper place to put in another housing development. But in any case, if this scenario, which was developed as a model by the former chairman of the Finance Committee, Sharon Verdet, there would be an under-recovery of taxes by about $92,000 or $10 per household. This plan, the Morrison Land, is part of the five-year capital plan. As you can see in here, it is slated for this particular time period, fiscal year 1998. There was a methodical and over-two-year approach to this, and it's part of the plan. What this says is that we can afford this within our overall five-year plan. What are the hurdles? What are the challenges? As I've noted, very sensitive negotiations. We do not have a firm purchase-and-sale agreement. We have talked with the attorney, and he said, "Sure, go ahead. Go and see if you can get that number." We have some letters from him saying that they have not turned down our offer at that number, but it's very sensitive. The other aspect is the life tenancy. We perceive that this will work to our advantage. Developers do not have patience. They have time, value, money. They must put the property in now in order to maximize their value. We have a little more patience. Are there side benefits? There sure are. In addition to protecting the property from development, saving tax dollars, this enhances the other town-owned land in Shoba Brook, Spring Hill, obviously Ice House Pond. It provides a buffer for Woodlawn Cemetery. It ties into the future Sudbury to Lowell Rail Trail. It provides significant habitat along the Shoba Brook. But what it does, to my mind, is this is the keystone to creating an Acton center that is what we want it to be. When you drive down Concord Road and that property is preserved, that will represent what we have in vision in our minds of what Acton Center should be. But this is the keystone property. In my words, this property leverages all of the surrounding properties. This time, I'm going to show a very brief video. This was a longer video, and I would like to thank Mr. John Duklos for doing this video and apologize to him because we have cut it in terms of, to respect your time here. And at this time, we'll just show that video.
The Morrison Farm is a privately-owned 32-acre parcel fronting along Concord Road between town-owned Ice House Pond and the soccer field at Woodlawn Cemetery. From Concord Road, a scenic vista stretches across one of Acton's few remaining undeveloped open areas. Seven acres of flat, open lands gradually slope down to Ice House Pond. With only minor grading, at least two full-size soccer fields and one baseball diamond could be developed here on this already cleared land. In addition, purchase of the Morrison Farm would provide full public access, which is presently very limited, to the pond and its associated woodlands. A path along the shoreline with benches and tables would enhance opportunities for picnicking, fishing, or canoeing in the warm months, and for ice skating and cross-country skiing during the winter. The 15-acre wooded back half of the Morrison property is crisscrossed with trails. Winding through stands of mature red oak and white pine, some of these paths lead to undeveloped cemetery land, while others lead toward the historic Isaac Davis Trail. These existing trails are suitable for walking, cross-country skiing, and horseback riding. A variety of wildlife, including deer, red fox, and coyote, inhabits this woodland. One might also see a red-tailed hawk here. During spring migrations, several species of migratory waterfowl are stopover visitors to the adjacent Ice House Pond, and many different marshbirds may be observed from the woodland trails overlooking the wetlands where Neshoba Brook feeds into the north end of the pond. Neshoba Brook, with its associated wetlands and buffer zones, is one of the few unbroken riverine ecosystems in this area. Preservation of the Morrison Farm as town-owned open space would help to protect this unique river corridor. Ice House Pond was dredged by the town as recently as 1995. It is stocked annually with trout. Pickle, perch, and sunfish are also abundant, thereby providing Acton citizens with the opportunity to fish in all seasons. The Morrison Farm site also has historic value. The Robbins Memorial Stone marks both the first place to be settled in Acton and the spot from which the Minutemen began their march to Concord in April of 1775. An abandoned train track runs along the eastern side of the pond and Neshoba Brook. Part of the state-sponsored Sudbury to Lowell rail trail will eventually run along this stretch of track. This rail trail will also provide a link for hikers and bikers between the North Acton Recreational Area and the Morrison Farm property in the center of Acton. This town meeting has the opportunity to take the first step toward preserving the Morrison Farm as open space. Acquisition of this unique property would preserve the scenic vista from Concord Road, provide much-needed additional playing fields, improve recreational access to our largest town-owned pond, and protect one of the area's important and unique ecosystems.
The chance is now. In 1950, you can see on this map the open space. You can see in the marked red, the developed land. If you had asked a resident in Acton in 1950 that we would be talking about acquiring or having problems with open space, that person would have found it laughable. That is the reason right now that we seek to acquire this land. Morrison Farm's our number-one priority for land acquisition identified by several reports over several years by several different committees. It'll be a wonderful acquisition for active and passive recreation. It enhances everything around it. It opens up the vistas of Ice House Pond, ties into the ballfields of Concord Road, on Concord Road, preserves that sigh of relief that after you come off 2A, that is Concord Road, provides a town-owned buffer to the tranquil Woodlawn Cemetery, reduces the chance of a continued build-out in that area, connects with the habitat of the Shoba Brook. The Morrison Farm allows us to preserve Acton as we want it to be, and the Board of Selectmen recommends the article.
Comments from the Finance Committee?
Sorry. The Finance Committee recommends passage of this article. The property has been at the top of the list of desirable properties to acquire. It is not a recent whim. It is becoming available now. We've included the Morrison Farm in our overall capital plan and determined that it is affordable, although outside the limits of Proposition 2.5. The proposal is to fund the purchase through a debt exclusion override. We believe that the taxpayers deserve the chance to decide whether or not they are willing to pay for it at the subsequent ballot vote required. We recommend a yes vote.
Other comment? Seeing nobody standing? There is someone standing. Yes, a lady at the back.
Deborah Symes. I live on Concord Road. I'm wondering if there are any other uses apart from ballfields and hiking trails and developing the pond's edge that have been bandied about at all? Other uses that have been talked about, or possibilities?
Hello? Those are the uses that have been talked about. There's, yeah.
Okay.
Gentlemen at the back?
Ralph Floren from Merrill Drive. A number of years ago, the town decided not to take the Damari Farm when that came on the market. If you've seen what's happened in the development of Pope Road and Wingate, Stony Mead, as much as I like, know people there, enjoy their company, that was a beautiful area. Now, this is one of the last pieces we have left, and I think we should try to buy this farm.
At the front?
Hi. My name is Bonnie Guyther. I live at 431 Main Street. I'd like to make a correction. Mrs. Morrison is... Mr. Morrison's widow lives in Littleton. Mrs. Morrison will not derive any financial benefit from the sale of this land. She lives there. It has been her residence for 40 years. It is a beautiful piece of land. I really encourage everyone to take a look at it. I hope the town votes for it. There's a lot more I want to say about it, but it's really a good investment.
Does anybody wish to speak against it? Let's vote.
I do have a question, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
There is a house and barn on the land after Mrs. Morrison's tenancy is over. Can that be sold to help offset the cost of acquiring the property?
Mr. Mullen?
Yes, but there is no plans to do so. There's no plans not to do so, but there are no plans to do so.
This takes a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I think the next article is 27. I think we can dispose of that very quickly. It's a non-binding resolution. Is that correct? It's a non-binding resolution. We only need to discuss it, if at all, for very few seconds. Mr. Hunter moves that the town support the resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter?
The rationale and reason for this non-binding resolution is set forth in the summary that set out in the warrant. It used to be in this society that there were more accepted mores and standards of custom that were more or less implied in the community. That seems to be fading, and we had a most regrettable incident last Halloween, as is mentioned in the summary, and we feel the town meeting is as close as we have to a conscience of the community, and the expression of town meeting as to appropriate Halloween conduct would be appropriate. Thus, this article, we hope you will endorse it. Thank you.
The Finance...
Yes, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not see any...
The Finance Committee does not see any financial impact of this resolution. There is no enforcement or similar costs. So therefore, we decline making any recommendations.
Other comment? I think, I'll take you. You haven't spoken at all, Ms. Aaronson. I'll take you. You haven't spoken once in this whole town meeting.
It's nice to be missed.
It is, it is, yes.
Steve Aronson, 236 Newtown Road. With regret, I'm unalterably opposed to this article. I think this is the silliest form of government. Absolutely, this town suffered an embarrassing and potentially dangerous incident last Halloween. For that, I think we all need to do some serious retrospection and some discussions with our children. This is an unfunded mandate that we are about to vote on. This is government intruding in the worst possible way into family life. This is like town meeting or the selectmen asking, or demanding, or establishing a precedent so that our children will clean their room, obey their fathers and mothers. They're all very nice things to do. I think it's completely out of the context and out of the realm of responsibility for the Board of Selectmen and for town meeting to consider such a resolution, and I hope it will be defeated. Thank you.
Lady at the back?
Marilyn Leeds, Bromfield Road. I support the resolution in principle because I think there has been a problem. It's very clear that there are issues. But it sounds as though it's legally unenforceable, and the kinds of behavior that occurred, some of which were in fact illegal, and those were the mechanisms to use. I would suggest, however, that the wording be amended to simply leave that "be it further resolved" part, that the citizens of Acton define Halloween activities that are acceptable to the community, and perhaps leave parts one and two that is really demonstrating the option for residents to participate or not participate by turning on their lights, and that those two points should be respected. But to set age limits, where it may be a teenage babysitter taking a child out, to limit children to their own neighborhoods when in fact, they may not have friends in their neighborhoods at all and may want to go visit friends, I think is completely inappropriate. So I would suggest wording to amend the resolution, deleting numbers four, five, and six, and just leave the guidelines as far as residents being able to turn on their lights to indicate...
Hold it. I just want to understand what you're doing. You're amending it to...
Deleting...
Let me see if I understand it. You're amending the resolution to delete four, five, and six?
Correct.
Okay.
And the rest I would leave...
I want to take that, but I want to get through this quickly.
I realize that.
But I want to make sure I understood what you wanted. Do I hear a second to her amendment? Okay. Any discussion on her amendment? I'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to delete four, five, and six, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Oh, boy. All in favor of the amendment, please stand. I counted it. 108 opposed, 92 in favor. I declare the amendment has lost. 92 in favor, 108 opposed. Okay. No one challenged me, great. We're back discussing the entire resolution. I will recognize Mr. Haddeman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm opposed to this entirely. Again, it's a case, as the first speaker had said, where government really can't regulate how our youngsters trick-or-treat, or frankly, if I should choose to accompany my youngsters in our neighborhood or another neighborhood from five to eight, or on a train, or on a plane, or on a boat, or whatever. I just really don't think this is any business of government. If laws were broken, then the police should enforce them. Other than that, I really think you can't legislate behavior or responsibility.
And if you did, you wouldn't be able to wear your little costume that you wear every year taking your kids around. I always, I don't need the costume anymore for an old gray-haired man, so it's a terrific guess.
Jeff Robinson, Marion Road. I was actually in Indian Village last Halloween. And while I was there, I was actually threatened by two students dressed in complete black. And there was a police cruiser that came down the street about two minutes later. The police cruiser went down the street. The kid said, "Duck the hands and bushes." Cops didn't see him. What you're asking is to enforce catching kids who are going to be dressed up in all black, who are not just from Acton, but from surrounding towns which have imposed laws such as this. And it's just a ridiculous thing to try to do. There were people who broke laws last year, and they were not caught. You're going to try to pass a law now that's just going to have the same effect. This really has no effect. And I mean, try to keep an 18-year-old from going out, you know, from five to eight. And I'll show you a kid who does his homework every night, you know, brushes his teeth, has a completely perfect room, gets all A's, and does everything his parents tell him.
Yeah, what's wrong with that? Mr. Katie?
I'd like to move the question. I think enough has been said about this.
Hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate on this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Debate is cut off. We'll vote on the motion as read. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Tavernier?
I move that we adjourn this meeting until tomorrow night at 7:30 in the high school auditorium.
Do I hear a second? Any debate? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Meeting's adjourned.